Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Select Board meeting. Would you please rise? Join me in the arts of allegiance. Arts of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to say good evening to the board members and the public that's here. First on the agenda tonight is the public hearing on the reconfiguration of a portion of Orchard Hill Road right-of-way. And I believe it's going to be, uh... Go ahead, go ahead. Joel, I know that, but Joel just jumped right at it.
I work for Millway Mines Associates. Here for the reconfiguration of the Orchard Hill Road. We were here before and we went after our hearing with you, we went back to the planning board. We got approval from the planning board on this configuration.
Need to put...
Take into the mine.
Take into the mine.
We haven't changed the design at all, but we've, uh... Mr. Conick, I wish he was here tonight. I think he's, uh... might have already purchased his property. It was part of... He was buying the property on both sides of the road, Lot 24 and Lot 7. He's, uh... We've drawn... Got approval for a subdivision on Lot 24 for a three-lot subdivision, but we're here for the reconfiguration of the Orchard Hill Road. If you have any questions?
Board members, anybody have any questions, please? Dan?
Yeah, I noticed the monuments are all set and stuff.
No, they're not set yet. I've just started.
No, I saw it written.
Yeah, we just started. It's one few days up. We've got a few more days left. Yep, 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 yep. We just started. I'm monumenting the new right-of-way, which is a 35-foot right-of-way, and I'm monumenting the other side of the 15-foot easement, both for the subdivision purposes and as well as the reconfiguration.
The subdivision's going here or here?
Right, yeah.
On this side? This is the... If I recall, I took a drive out here, but this is the side of the road that's working slightly upward?
Yes.
Okay. And so there... And along here, there's gated areas and things like that, but this would become a regular lot?
Yes.
The configuration of them is...
This is...
Yeah, there we go, triangular shape.
So this is the bond?
Yeah. There was a lot of discussion around it with the planning board from a lot size. That's how they can make it so that the lot sizes are legit, but it does require a pass-through over the middle lot to get to the back lot.
We had to go to zoning board to get a special exception to...
To dry up, yeah.
To get the access from Orchard Hill Road rather than from Tolon Road for one of the
Anybody else in the board have a question or comment?
I think it's an improvement, looking what's there.
It is a great improvement.
That's what I'm saying, so...
So anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this project?
Tracy, yes.
Tracy, you have something else?
So, as I understand it, the individual that owns this, that's subdividing it, would be tearing this down?
Yes.
And that would then extend this roadway where you could turn here and then meet up with 125? Is that correct?
No. No. That won't happen, because there's a long section that changes.
So, this isn't about the subdivision. This is about the actual right-of-way. The subdivision has already been conditionally approved by the planning board. This is about a section of the road owned now by Mr. Conick. He owns both sides of the road. Over the years, we've had more than one, I believe, court case. I have a whole file of issues we've had with the road. It's extremely narrow, especially that pinch point where the house in the barn is. Mr. Conick also owns Leand, the Class 6, portion of the far end where he built a home for duplex for his kids. Recognizing that this section of the road is extremely dangerous, and we've had issues in the past for fire access, police access, we've had to actually have the police escort the highway department to plow the road. They went to court and... The last owner prior to Mr. Conick and came to basically mediation and agreement about where they were going to have the road, which was extremely narrow and didn't really allow the town to maintain it safely wide enough. Mr. Conick has agreed to get the necessary right-of-way and to tear down the house in order to approve the section of the road that he owns, not beyond that. So the only section right now that's being laid out is the section where Mr. Conick owns both sides of the road and is improving it to 35 feet in width plus a 15-foot slope easement. Now, and I just want to stress, even if the town, although I'm sure they'll plan to do some work on the road, because it is a town, a deficient town-maintained road, and they've been unable to improve it now for decades. This road was maintained by the town for more than 20 years prior to 1968. That's how long the town has been maintaining this road, this section of road. With the tearing down of the house, even if they weren't to even do any reconstruction, it would allow them to push the snow back and to maintain a wider path for vehicles. Because clearly, it's down to about a single lane at certain points right now, and I know I emailed you information that was provided to the planning board from the fire chief had taken a picture from one of the fire trucks.
That came through today's email, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, does that... With this being torn down and this road being expanded, does it then also allow these to become buildable lots?
It already is a buildable lot. When he tears down that house, he can replace that house in a more suitable place on the lot.
But then he has to also approach the board and should break this out, say...
He's not going to break that up. That is one lot. He could... He ended up, I would say, and not this is the selectmen's, this is a planning board issue, he probably ended up with one lot he may not have otherwise had with the width of the right-of-way the way it was, but it was short a few hundred square feet. He's not actually adding an additional driveway, because the two lots that front on Tolon Road, one of them fronts on Orchard Hill and Tolon, he was granted a special exception by the ZBA to allow the lot that has fronted on Tolon Road only to use a shared access with the house that's on the corner. So there'll be one additional curb cut on Orchard Hill Road. There's already one for the barn, and there's already one for the house. So our hope is, there's still an issue just beyond this, where there's like a knob. My understanding is from Mr. Conick that he does have a purchase and sales agreement for that lot also, so I know folks had come in before from the neighborhood that maybe we can kind of realign that section of road more appropriately. Any development, and I just want to put it, any development that would happen on the Class 6 portion of Orchard Hill Road would require that, with that portion of the road being upgraded. So this is not... This is strictly a safety issue for that section of road. It's not allowing for further development on the Class 6 portion, because we're just dealing with what's maintained currently by the town.
Okay. Is Peter Cook approved this?
We'll get Peter right here in a minute. Dan?
Fire chief.
Just... As soon as I finish with the board, I'll take care of that part. Peter, can you come in a minute, please? Tracy has a question for you. Thank you.
I assume that this has been approved right, and that you feel very comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for, you know, fixing that section of road, and I was actually up there last week, I think, yeah, last Tuesday with the town engineer, so we could get a price on what it was going to cost and what we want to do.
What it will cost the town, or what it will cost the...
It will cost the town to redo that road, because it was originally thought, when we met way back when, that we should tie the whole thing together if possible. So that's what we're looking at doing.
Okay.
Any other questions to the board members? Now I'll take public comment. Chief?
A few years ago, I worked for the highway department, and that was one of the roads that I plowed, and you could just about get up through there with a 12-foot blade without taking the mailbox out. From a public safety standpoint, I strongly encourage the town to move forward with this project and hopefully find the affordable funding to get this road widened out. If you look at the picture that Administrator Scruton has used for years for winter maintenance, I think that's the slide used, is a picture taken out of the windshield of the fire truck. The tires, in that particular storm, we had, uh... Winter, I should say, we had a lot of snow, and the issue came up as to whether or not we could safely get a fire truck up that hill. So that's kind of affected Administrator Scruton up. We rode up through there in our engine, and so he could see just how narrow that was, and the tires were actually hitting the snowbanks on either side, because there was no place for the town to put the snow. And as they alluded, after you go by that house that they're looking to take out, there is a considerable knob there, and if you were to catch somebody at the wrong spot, somebody's going to back up. And if... And I've always gone back to the fact that any time we have to back the fire truck up, that becomes dangerous, same as a passenger vehicle. So it would be my hope that you would support the town making the upgrades to this road. I realize it's a relatively minor impact road, but it is dangerous from a public safety standpoint. It's very narrow. So I think this is a huge step in the right direction, and hopefully the town will be able to come to an agreement and take some of that knob out. Once you get on the other side of that knob, the road widens out considerably, and then most of the time, you could pass a fire truck and a vehicle, so it's really that relatively short distance. So I would encourage you to approve this.
Please?
If I can just clarify, there's two things going on here. One is, are we going to agree to reconfigure the road, which is all that's in front of you right now? What Peter and Rick and Masha said is future plans on what we would like to do going forward if we can get the next piece to fall in, but this is the first piece that needs to fall into place. And then the next one is that knob, and then the intent would be to spend some money out there, depending upon what we need to do to make it safer for everyone that's out there. But that's not what's in front of the board right now. Right now, what's in front of the board is just accepting the additional width and reconfiguring it to make it work.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Close the public comment of this meeting, and any further comments from the board? Dan?
Yeah, but this is premature to where your feedback from the engineers.
Well, the second phase is not the first phase. Accepting the additional width and reconfiguring is certainly appropriate today.
Right, today.
Tracy?
Have we budgeted, or is that going to become part of the next year's budget?
That's future.
Future. The knob is not part of ours. Any other further comments from the board? A motion to accept? A motion to second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Aye aye. I will close this portion of the public hearing on the reconfiguration of the portion of the Orchard Hill Road right-of-way.
Masha has one additional clarification.
Just to...
I had already asked for comments, but go ahead. I'm waiting for you.
Well, no, because of the...
You're ready to go.
I'm sorry, because of the way you voted. Just to be sure, there is a little slimmer that was part of the court decision that we now want to incorporate as abandoning that slimmer.
Yes.
And I know when I spoke to Jay Whitewell-Pryker, retiring, that should be included, and it shows, it's just a little tiny... This little section, L2 on the plan, this thing became a name in the paint. It's a very small amount of square footage, but that is no longer missed.
So I would suggest an additional motion to clarify that the reconfiguration includes abandoning that L2.
I think it becomes part of the slope easement, not part of the right-of-way.
So move, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Dan, second it. Do you have a vote, please?
Aye aye.
Aye aye. Aye aye. Aye aye. Now I will reclose this portion of the hearing. I'll open up the public hearing on the issuance of two billing permits for Longshore Drive, Robert and Natalie Clark, map 103, lot 0031, and Small Road to J. Matthew Hines, map 107, lot 0003. The first of our hearing will be from Robert and Natalie Clark.
Robert and Natalie Clark want to build a single-family dwelling on Longshore Drive, listed as map 103, lot 31. Peter Cook has viewed the road, and he notes that it is solid, but it's rough in several spots. His recommendation at completion of the project is to grade the road from Second Crown Point to this lot, and also recommends that the Clarks join the road association to help with future maintenance of the road.
Would you make sure that when the... If this goes... If this is accepted by the board, that that is annotated in their letter?
Yep.
Thank you.
And the plan... It's been before the planning board, and they also noted their support for Mr. Cook's recommendation.
Okay. Comments from the board? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Please come forward and state your name.
It's a little loud for me. I'm here not representing the planning board, but I'm a member of the planning board. Small Road is too small. I went up there and told them...
We're not doing Small Road. We're on the wrong one.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Thank you. No, we're doing Lot 103... I mean, excuse me, map 103, lot 31. Any other further comments?
If anybody just wants to see any of the information...
I have it here, too. Dan?
I'll make a motion to accept with the conditions needed.
So move, do I have a second, please?
Second it.
A second from Andy. Take a vote.
Aye aye.
Article I.
Hatch I.
Map I.
Aye aye. So the permit for Robert and Natalie Clark, lot 103... Excuse me, map 103, lot 31, has been approved. John?
The... Just a question for Suzanne. The required filing at the registry has been done already, hasn't it?
No, it won't be done. These property owners live, I think, in New York, and what I need is an original private road agreement. So when they come to pick up the building permit, I'm going to work with John Huckins to get an original that will be recorded at the registry.
Okay, so just to be clear to everyone in the audience, there was a requirement that these builders get a waiver of liability filed with the registry.
I appreciate that. The next one is the issuance of a billing permit on Small Road for J. Matthew Hines, lot 107... I mean, excuse me, map 107, lot 3.
And Mr. Hines would like to build a new two-story, single-family dwelling. Peter has viewed the road and noted that the first section of Small Road going in from 202 is tired, but it needs to be repaired either with cold or hot patch. The dirt section has a good base, but it also would need to be graded after completion of the project. The planning board had also heard this case, and they support the recommendation of Mr. Cook.
Does the Select Board have any comments, please? Dan?
Wasn't the... They don't begin at the width there on that section. We had another one before, in the same section?
We've had a few.
We're talking about Small Road.
Right.
Stay with us.
A month ago?
We've approved... The board has approved 71 Small Road.
Correct. All right. It's a tight lot, but...
It's a dead-end road.
Any further comments? Comments from the public?
I took a look at Small Road. It is definitely small. It is too small. In fact, it's smaller than the selectmen's policy on Class 6 and private roads allow, which state that the minimum requirements to ensure that emergency vehicles be able to access the property at any time of year is 16-foot traveled surface with 2-foot shoulders. I took out a tape measure, put it to 20 feet, took some pictures. I have them with me if you would like to see them. It basically goes beyond trees and into rock walls. There is not 20-foot of travelable surface.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward and state your name.
I'm a resident of Small Road. My name is Gina Severcovo. I just built a new house, two houses up from that. My home is massive. It's a raised garage. The road is very small, because it was a camp lot road, and due to the fact that people don't always only land on the other side of it, we do make do. The road has recently been graded, matter of fact, today, as a matter of fact, new gravel put down. Our association does keep up the road. We grade two, three times a year, depending on the rain, the runoff, whatnot. Presently, the lot that we're discussing is my brother's lot, and he's been there for 30 years, and I would think it would be unfair to tell him he can't build, honestly.
Thank you for your comments. Any more comments in the public? Seeing none, I'll call... Close the public comment section. Board members, comments?
I just questioned your...
Mr. Cook, could you step forward, please?
Do you feel comfortable with another home being built on this roadway?
I don't see any issues. You know, we can go back and be in a Small Road or whatever, but most of your lake... Most of your roads around your lakes and stuff like this one don't have 20 feet of right-of-way, let alone 30 feet. You know, people get in and out of there right now, no problem at all. You know, like Mr. Diamond mentioned, you've got, you know, stone walls and stuff, and you're not going to be taking down stone walls and stuff to be able to do this part of the road. They take good care of the road for the most part. It's graded fairly regularly, and they add material fairly regularly. You know, I don't see any issues.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes.
Yes, please. Chief, do you have a minute, please? Fire chief?
Certainly, you know, the town has a policy in place on the width of roads and stuff, but again, that's an older, established road that has a lot of record on it. I'm not sure if a home is being taken down to replace that, but at any rate, it's probably been being taxed as a lot of record, somebody built a house on. The residents down in on that street do a very good job of maintaining it, including stone removal. Yep, it's narrow, and we may run into the situation of having a backup fire truck out of there, but I'm not sure that adding that one house is going to create the issue for us. So, again, we can get in and out of there, and there are roads that are less maintained through the course of the year, but them people on the Small Road do a remarkable job of keeping it, so we can get in and out the best that they can.
Are you all set?
Just a question, are we taxing the property currently as a burden of the burden?
John?
Yeah, I think there's a little confusion on the policy, because I was on the board when the policy was written. That policy has those dimensional width, but it also goes on that the board can release that and make it smaller for a single dwelling on a single lot, which is what this is. The whole thing on that dimensional requirement, if someone wanted to do a duplex or something bigger, which had more of an impact, they wanted to make sure the road could handle that, but it wasn't for a single family on a single lot, if you actually read the policy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any further questions to the board? The board would desire to do what? A motion for approval or a motion not to approve?
Well, I think they're doing all they can do, and I think they... I agree that they work together to do what everybody can do to make the road as passable as properly so. As far as I'm concerned, for the one-family home, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second it.
With Peter's conditions.
Yes.
With Peter's conditions, no...
Aye aye.
Article I.
Hatch I.
Yeah, aye.
Aye aye. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on issuance of two billing permits for long shores and on Small Road. Public hearing is completed. Next, we move to appointments. Appointments, the first individual, Mr. Wallace, Mr. John Wallace.
Good evening. We've got a few issues. Is there one that you guys want to address first, or...
According to this here, for Stonehouse Conservation Land. And then the second one is going... Excuse me, is willing to poop trail.
Well, but what is the issue there? I mean, does that do with the vandalism on the signs? Is that what I was understanding?
That was it. Your request, we have this here, John.
No. I think the board... I think the board wanted it on the agenda from the last...
Then I will speak through it. I'm just going to speak not only to the people here, but the people at home that are observing us, in the fact is that we have such a nice piece of land out here where people go and enjoy it, even someone my age and my size go out there and they walk the land once in a while. Not the whole land, but part of it. But to see the vandalism that goes on out there, and it's unbelievable. Last year, we had people that had a party out there, had glass out there, as John can recall, and we just have to realize, this is ours to use and to appreciate. Thank you, that's all I have to say. Please take care of the property. John?
While we're talking about taking care of the property, do you know where we're at with the dam? Pam was working on that, and remember, we had a deficiency, and I didn't know where we were at on it. I just happened to think... It's hard to catch you off guard, but while it was up, I thought I'd ask about that.
As far as I know, she has been in touch with the folks at Dan Barrel about it, but I've not heard anything lately, so I really don't know.
Could you follow through and let us know what she did?
Sure, I'll ask her about that.
So now the next one we go to is the Stonehouse Conservation Land. I'm sorry, Dan?
Everything else is in progress over there, on the parking lot, so I'm making efforts to pause them.
Down, John.
Okay, so we know that. And the vandalism that we signed and were scraped up, that had been replaced. I don't know if anyone heard that.
Yeah, we have heard. We appreciate all the efforts you've put forward on that.
Fairly easy to do, thank goodness. Anyway, just on terms of the Stonehouse Forest project, there are two requests I made for you. I assume you've got the memos that I sent. Just the first one I'll address, because I have it right here, is having to do with possibly redesignating a portion of Marsh Road, what used to be Long Marsh Road, from a Class 6 road to a Class A trail. Phil Oger from Southeast Land Trust is here, and he can perhaps fill you in with more of the details and the reasons why better than I can, but...
We would like to take that under further advisement, John, and then schedule another time to come back and discuss that with you, if you don't mind.
Could Phil go ahead and give a...
I should be open. Board, how's the board feeling? Board interested in hearing it?
The man who made the trip and...
Very welcome. Please come forward and make your presentation.
That's just my opinion.
No, that's great. It's a great one.
Phil Oger with the Southeast Land Trust, and thanks for having me. We're in the process of putting together a recreation plan for the Stonehouse Forest, not Stonehouse Pond, the 1,500-acre lot that we just acquired last year. And we're well on the way to doing that, and we're going to have that finished this summer so that we can begin to improve parking and trails and that sort of thing. We'll see where we are in the fall in terms of real improvements, but we really want to get that... to get that open to the public. That's one of our main goals, so that's why we're working on that. But anyway, in the planning part of this process, a lot of the trails on that property go to Long Marsh Road, I still call it that, Marsh Road, and we'll use Marsh Road as part of the trail network. The Snow Machine Club uses it, walkers will use it, and so on. And we're going to be installing gates, heavy-duty gates, on our trail access points on that road. And in the planning, what made sense to us, what we thought started to be a logical, a more logical approach, was actually incorporating Long Marsh Road into the trail network. That's what it turns this amounts to. So that'd be the section from Route 9 on the west side to our boundary line on the east side, which is quite a stretch of road. The road's not in the best of condition. It goes into Long Marsh. Basically, if you try to drive a vehicle through there, you have to go through water to get to the other side. And then beyond that, it goes upland to our boundary line. The other part of this that we wanted to talk about is to improve access, we're going to have parking on some of the gates that currently exist on Route 9 and on Mary Hill Road, and of course, we've been improving access points on Stonehouse Pond, which abuts the 1,500 acres. Some of you may have seen that we've put in new parking there. We're not quite done with that. We'll be finishing that this summer. One of the things that I think makes sense from a planning perspective is the town owns a very small lot right at the intersection of Marsh Road and Route 9 that was, it had a house on, I can remember when the house was taken down, I can remember cleaning up the property afterwards when we were doing the Stonehouse Pond project, because a lot of debris from that, that building was on that property. At any rate, it would be, I think, advantageous for the townspeople and the region, people that come and use this, if we had a parking spot at that location as well. So, what we're hoping you'll consider is two things, redesignating, and I know that'll take a town vote, a section of Marsh Road, and consider parking at that location. That way, we can install gates on both ends of it and have the entry points to our trail network just be open rather than gated from Marsh Road. So that's really what we're talking about.
Any questions from the board members?
No, but we do have comment. We do own a lot up in there.
Yeah, we do own a lot up in there. We own two lots, yeah.
You own two, that's right.
I don't necessarily share the same opinion on that.
This is just-
It's for discussion.
This presentation, that's it. John, you have something?
Well, I thought, I thought the, as far as whether we take action next year on a Class A trail, I think is premature today, but I would think the board could make a decision to allow that small vacant lot to become a parking lot and let them proceed with making a parking lot there.
Just-
Because it's right on Route 9.
Just as a reminder, John, we've already had two votes on it, and twice we voted not to allow those two lots to go.
No, no, that's not the two lots. This is a different lot.
Okay.
I want to see the information on that lot.
I'm not ready, I'm not ready to bring it to a vote tonight.
I have to agree with Andy. I think we need to see the actual layout of it.
Okay.
It is a small lot that's sitting on Route 9. It's not the two, the three that we talked about before.
All right. Dan?
Isn't that close to Stonehouse Pond?
It's much closer.
Where Long Marsh comes out?
No.
Quarter mile, it's close. It's three quarters of a mile, a half on, at the shores.
That's not as close to the outdoors.
No. Yeah, we have a new trail through there. You can walk, park on one end of it or the other and just walk right through.
Perhaps somebody, I know Peter showed it to me the other day when we were out looking at roads, somebody could maybe mark it and see, but it really doesn't have much use for the town, but it would make good parking. The board's always saying they want parking, so if somebody could put flags there, that would be helpful.
Well, then I think we should, we should turn around and have them do a report up on that piece of property, bring it to us, and we can have a consideration then. Does anybody object to that?
I'd like to see it outlined. The only other thing I'll mention is, and I certainly am in full agreement with the usage of this land for outdoor activities and things like that, when you open a parking space like this and you don't take into consideration things like trash pickup, if you're not posting carry-ins, and most people who enjoy the environment and the outdoors do the right thing, some people do not, I would just not want the town to then take on having to clean it up, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, any other comments from the board?
I actually have a folder on that lot in the office that I will get the information to.
That's super, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I do know that Marsha wants to make a statement, so I'm going to let Marsha make a statement.
Sure. One of the things I want to point out, if we are planning on constructing parking lots, we need site review and we need driveway permits, whether they be state or local driveway permits, because this is a non-residential construction, and we do not have any exemption under our regulations.
And this would be a state permit, I believe, because it comes down to 202.
It's actually, pull it up, pull it up.
It's actually part of your, it's an existing law.
Go ahead, Andy.
We need to, in HDOT, they have to be notified by any intensity or change in use, and it may not be something that was ever permitted before, so clearly, they need to be notified. And the planning board, just like we did for that small little conservation commission parking lot of five spots, they do, they do need to have a plan, and it does need to be approved by the planning board. And Marsh Road, be it a, I would assume, if now is a classics road, it would still need a driveway permit, and they would still need review.
And that would create the exact conundrum that we're running into now with the stretch off of Wild, is Wildcat Road, or what's the, the?
Well, Goodwill property on Route 9 is another one where the driveway permit was never properly gotten from the state.
Right, but I'm talking, I'm talking about the access, you know, beyond Wildcat, that cuts, cuts down in there to that-
Swain's Union?
Yeah, Swain's Road, that, it created that whole conundrum with the people that live on the road coming before us, taking it from a Class 6 to a Class 5.
Oh, no, that's Swain's.
Yeah, it's that amount of strength. I'm saying-
Let's get, let's get-
Though I understand that you're talking about parking as well on Marsh Road, and Marsh Road is a Class 6 road.
Well, the, if I could, the lot, one side is Route 9, one side is Marsh Road, so it's right there as you go in, so if the driveway's either going to be Marsh Road or Route 9, there probably was a house, a driveway for that house at one point, so-
Right.
You're going to have to go to the state, and you're going to have to go to the planning board, but it's not way in like, like this one, where you're going to be going, I mean, the parking is right on the, on Route 9.
No, I believe what they were alluding to was gating the bottom end of Marsh Road. If you went up from Beatty Hill, Beatty Hill into Marsh, and then up through there.
Oh, I thought we were just talking parking right now.
Does it go off Beatty Hill Road?
Isn't, or Mary Hill, sorry, Mary Hill, where you go Mary Hill-
We're talking the other end of the road.
Yeah, right. Which is, they talked about, they want, part of requesting to make it a Class A trail means you would gate off that bottom end. What he was alluding to is parking there, and that creates a whole nother-
No, we were not talking about-
Excuse me, as a reminder, we just had this as a informational period here. We have said we're going to carry, I'm going to be right with you, Dan, we're going to carry it through and go that way, so I'm going to withhold discussion on something that's nothing now. Dan, you have something?
The master plan calls that, it could be a thorough, actually, too.
Yeah, that'll be part of the discussion later. Anything else you want to ask these two gentlemen? Thank you both very much, I appreciate you coming.
I'm sorry, that just has to do with the, this small lot and the parking. Is that something about you wanted a report or something?
Yes, we do.
Is that something I need to worry about?
No, Suzanne's going to take care of all that for us. See, you're all set, John.
And, and somebody will have to go market, which I don't know who would do that. If you don't mind doing that, that would be good. Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you.
And so, you'll let me know when you're ready to reconsider this issue, I assume?
We will, we'll let everybody know, we'll put it on the agenda, you'll be notified.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, John.
Phil, I'll send you the same packet, okay?
Thanks, Suzanne.
Next issue is Michelle Meister?
Yes.
Please.
Suzanne.
Michelle is here to discuss 68 Hours of Hunger.
Do you want to go to talk with her?
Yeah.
I apologize, I only had one name, and that's-
That's no problem. We can work together. I don't know if they're reading the press.
That's coming.
No, that's coming in the air.
Because it ties in with that.
Okay.
Is it okay if you just put it together?
You can do that if you want, and I'll read it at the end.
Oh, no, because they do it. So, what we were doing is that, so May 20th to the 26th is Public Works Week, so we brainstormed about what we could do to bring attention to the Public Works Department, and we decided we wanted to do a food drive. And we had looked around, and we found that there is a End 68 Hours of Hunger that is right here in Barrington. So, I brought Michelle, I asked her to come, so she can talk on behalf, because not a lot of people know about it, and it has to do with the school department, correct?
Yes. Okay. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Michelle Meister. I'm the co-chair with Kim Gibson for the Barrington Chapter of End 68 Hours, which is a program that puts food for the weekend for children in, in our town. And the 68 Hours means that is the time when a child has their free lunch at school on Friday until they come back on Monday morning and receive their free breakfast. And that period, during that time, it's very critical, and we, at this point, have 27 children that we are packing for. We pack each week. It is a completely 100% volunteer organization. 100% of all monies that we take in are used to buy the food. It's $10 for each bag that we pack for each child, which is two breakfasts, two lunches, and three dinners, and there's some food left over, so that kind of might help somebody else in the family. So, it's been a wonderful project. We've had a lot of help in town already, which has been great, and to be able to work and have this, it's a stuff-a-truck, so we're really excited about being able to work with the Highway Department on this. And if you have any questions about the program, I'd love to answer them for you.
Michelle, I want to thank you very much for coming by and speaking with us. I have a question I want to ask. Do you have an email address that if somebody wanted to, or can you accept donations that way?
Yes, we can.
We're going to have it up. I know Kim did something-
Please, the speaker.
I know that Kim did something on the Facebook page. They have an End 68 Hours of Hunger for Barrington page that she did, and I have, I'm going to put the contact information on our page as well, as well as up on the website.
Fantastic. Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, we approved this.
Yes, we did.
We're kind of plugging it. We're kind of plugging it to-
And then I know the males donated, they did last week, too.
I think that might have been for the food pantry.
That was for the food pantry, it had nothing to do with the children.
Right, this is specifically for the schools. And so, we do the early learning center, the elementary school and the middle school. We also, which, I'll make sure Erin has the information for this, we've just started a GoFundMe, and it's doing quite well, so we can always have people give donations in that way, too.
What is the purpose of your GoFundMe?
It's just a way to have a broader audience in order to have people donate. And again, all of the money goes directly to buying food. We don't use it for anything else. Just gets a little outside of the town, so that it, you know, we reach more people, but-
I know usually there are goal limits with that.
Oh, our goal is $6,800. So, we have $3,000 so far, and we've had the page up for a month.
What's your deadline?
We are keeping it open, so we haven't really set a deadline for it yet.
Didn't think they allowed GoFundMe if I had a set start and stop time tied to it.
It might. I would say probably that we would end it by the end of the summer, and do it that way, so. Are there any other questions on the program?
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming.
I just wanted to-
I'm sorry, Tracy, I didn't see.
Because we have people who can view this via YouTube at any point, can you just list the 10 main items that you'd like us to donate?
Can we do two things? Can we let everybody at home know when it's going to be?
Please do that.
So, we're, we're doing two days. So, the first day will be on May 22nd, which is a Tuesday, and we'll be doing from 1:00 to 5:00, and it will be at the transfer station. But we'll kind of be on that middle island, and we'll have a truck and another piece of equipment put up. And then the second day is going to be on Saturday, May 26th, and it's, it says 8:00 to 5:00, but we're really, I'm going to probably change it to 8:00 to 2:00. They'll still take donations, but we'll have volunteers and people there from 8:00 to 2:00.
And so, just to give you an idea of some of the products, it's pudding cups, it's macaroni and cheese, peanut butter, chunky soup, small cans of tuna fish, Cheez-Its, Hormel Complete dinners, premium saltines, Lloyds, shredded pork, and Quaker oatmeal. These are the items that can also do well over the summer. We have a warehouse, and these are the kind of products that work well there. We also actually tried to put some of the ones that are a little bit more expensive in our budget, so that perhaps those could be donated, especially the peanut butter, the Hormel Complete, and the chunky soups are incredible items for us to receive, and it really saves our budget, so.
You brought up a point, summertime. Do you, do you have any program affiliation during the summer?
We don't right now. Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to continue it, but I think probably most of the families then depend more on the food pantry. So I think that would be, our goal is to make it at some point a full-time project, but at this point, it's just during the school year.
Sure. Any more questions from the board?
If anybody would like to volunteer for any of those hours, you're more than welcome to come down.
Andy?
I was actually just going to say, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like some more information, because I wouldn't mind volunteering for helping pack or whatever else you need, and then also, talking with you, we do charity the month through my work, and I think this would be a great opportunity for us to do that.
I would love that. I'll make sure that I leave my email for you before I leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate the presentation, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on, we have bids for paving. First one I'm opening up is from R&amp;D Paving.
So, a total of five were received.
That's good news.
I'm going to do here, as the next public, since I finished opening, is that I'm going to do a, I'm going to do a public comment. I said you were, you wasn't even listening, you were just, so, yeah.
I'm sure-
I'm just saying that it was made.
We supposed to have a check for this?
No, no.
Okay. So, so then, what we have here is, no, it's right here. Total of the project price for R&amp;D is $603,975 and 20 cents.
To be precise.
Pardon?
I said to be precise.
That's exactly what you asked me to do.
20 cents.
So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put these together, so everybody remembers that we're going to put all these together, I'm going to ask Peter to review them, because as a reminder to everybody, we're having a, a next Selectman's meeting is going to be May 21st, so that'll be next week. The next one is from GMI Asphalt LLC.
And incidentally, the alternate was $26 a cubic yard for the stone dam.
27?
26. Just an FYI for that alternate.
There was, what was it?
Yeah, that doesn't affect the award, that was just...
The price from GMI Asphalt LLC comes in at $593,752.20. And the alternate, four square yards, and the alternate is $0.95 per square yard. Thank you very much. This is not a Christmas... The next one is from Pike Industries. Price per square yard for the alternate is $4.25, and the total contact price is $652,883.00. And zero cents. That's from Pike Industries. Thank you. The next one is from Brox. Total price is $603,913.22, and the price per yard for the alternate is $7 a square yard, and that is from Brox.
They show Bering on the alternate.
Yes, they have. I think the other made a mistake, but it's not my fault. I'll enjoy it. Thank you. The next one is from Advanced Escavating and Paving. There's a notation on their bid, it says pricing in place based on current NHDOT posting for liquid asphalt adjustment to be made if required, based on NHOD road and bridge specifications. Current liquid price is $482.50. The bid from Advanced is $628,698.30. Say that again? And the price per square yard alternate is $8.10.
What happened to this guy with the $0.95?
Well...
That's something that Pete...
We did more.
Take the first one, please.
If you wanted to look at R&amp;D?
R&amp;D, R&amp;D had the $0.95.
No, GMI.
GMI, rather, okay.
So, is GMI quoting a square foot instead of a square yard, maybe?
That's something to look at, make that note. You good, GMI?
All right, just a minute.
First question.
And one bid cubic yard rather than square yard.
Right, right.
So, that one was bidding how much rock would go down, and you could convert, there's an easy enough formula to convert that to the square yard.
He changed it to $0.95 per square yard, SY.
Yeah, that has to be wrong.
No, why that times nine?
Yeah, per square. You don't think it was square, what did he mean?
No, it's got square yard, he has SY on the bid.
No, I mean, he's the lowest bidder as well by $10,000.
Yes, he's the apparent low bidder.
All right, so what we're going to do with this here, yes, Dan?
Could I get a copy of that, look at the tonage and...
All right, you work that out with the clerk, and we go that way there, please. Thank you. There's no reason you're not to get it, just work it out with the clerk tomorrow.
Can you just scan that? All we need is the...
So, just for understanding, we have a meeting next week. Peter, will you be able to have that available? Available to us next week? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Want to close the bids?
RMI was the low, apparent low bidder, GMI at $593,750. Brox was the second at $603,913, with R&amp;D at $603,975. There were two very close there.
Yep.
And then, the next one was Advanced at $628, and Pike at $652 was the high bid.
Yep.
And if you're gonna make a copy, can you make me a copy of it, John?
Anybody else on the board like a copy?
I'll email it.
You'll email everybody, including us. Okay, thank you.
I'll...
There we go. I think you only need to do the two pages that have numbers on it.
Yep.
Well...
So, who's...
I'd like to look at the, all of the streets, up from QBI to...
As I said, would you please work that out tomorrow with the clerk, and then we can move forward with the...
She's the chairman, and I'm asking as a selectman.
I understand that, and I'm asking, I just asked you. Work with the clerk tomorrow, and she'll get that information for you.
That sheet that she's gonna send has the cubic yards on it.
All right. Yep, everything you need. Moving on, public comment, three minutes. Public comment, anybody, please? Please state your name.
Paul Mosteller, 83 Washington Street. Just observing what you guys just did here with the bid, that paving is almost 10% of our budget for the town. So, everybody on the board should be reviewing the whole thing. And Dawn knows the business, Dan knows the business, I think for an informal selectmen should be to review everything that they submit.
That is the policy. Soon as Mr. Cook makes his determination, puts it all together, they will all have a copy of his statements, they will all review it, and they will all be back here on the 21st to vote.
Exactly.
That's exactly what we're doing, I appreciate that.
It's actually $100,000 under budget.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, what's our budget this year? Seven hundred dollars?
Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, you're at $600,000, that's close to 10%.
You're under.
Let's move on, is there any other public comment, please? Yes, sir.
My name's Elijah Obrey, and I came here this evening just to say thank you to the Board of Selectmen for the project that we had with the Police Department in this past December and January. It was a pleasure, and it was a great honor to serve the community in that capacity. I look forward to several more community service projects coming out of Trail Life USA here. And I also wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for the proclamation of April 21st being Elijah William Obrey Day. That was a real, that was a big surprise, a big treat, and something that I look forward to putting on a resume someday. Thank you so much.
Excuse me. I want to thank you very much for coming forward and thanking everyone involved. Dan, you had something you want to say?
Yes, since the Chief of Police is not here, I'd like to thank you for making a sign for him.
Yes.
And I very appreciated it that day, you delivered to him, I was there at the Take Back Day, he went out of his way, he made a sign for Chief Williams.
Yes, I, at the Freedom Award Ceremony, where I achieved the highest rank in Trail Life USA, I made signs, wooden signs carved names into them of all the people that have impacted my life along my journey to freedom, and Chief Williams was on that trail.
I want to thank you, it was a great project, it was a head-turner, and I'm sure everybody else has appreciated it. Anybody else on the board, we have any comments?
We just want to thank you for your involvement.
Yep.
The work you put in.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work here for this town. It's a big thing, it's volunteer position, I know that, it's sometimes thankless, and I want to recognize that, thank you very much for your work this time.
And I appreciate you achieving the award that you did, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Elijah.
Sam Boerak, 34 Stanley Lane, I'll reiterate Elijah's comments of thanking the board, thank you all for your service. I come here representing the informal group known as Stars and Stripes for Barrington. Memorial Day will be coming up, and my darling sister Stephanie, who apologizes that she wasn't able to attend tonight, asked me to come on her behalf to ask for the annual signature for Public Service in New Hampshire Poll Attachment Application Permission to temporarily attach. And this for everybody's public, for the public knowledge, is just for the stretch on Route 9 that she, that we put flags up and down on.
Make the motion.
A motion made.
I'll second it.
Have a second?
Do you want a comment?
No comments, so I have a vote, please.
Hard a cop eye.
F eye.
Aye to aye.
Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Sam, thank you, sister. Fine, yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that each of these flags cost approximately $25. Could you provide us with an address to mail a check to, should we want to?
It can either come to the town.
Okay.
It probably could come to the town.
Yeah.
That's what people do, you, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to direct anybody to Suzanne, thank you, Suzanne.
And what do they put on, who they make it out to, they don't make it out to the town?
Stars and Stripes.
Stars and Stripes on the number line, and am I right that it's about $25 per flagstone?
I'm not sure what it is, but she'll take any donations, because some of the flags need to be replaced.
Right, I know the whole assembly is around 72, with the flag, the whole thing that allows it to spin, the attachment, it adds up, so any contribution amount certainly is helpful. And she'll be putting an order in shortly for those flags.
Great, thank you.
It's a pleasure to sign, man, thank you very much for letting me do it.
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie.
Any other public comments? Chief?
I'm representing the Firemen's Association right now. We had a request from local family, for the last seven or eight years, we've done an MDA boot drive in front of the transfer station entrance, and we usually coordinate it on Barrington Day, which I believe is June the 9th this year. So, we're formally requesting permission from you folks to allow us to do that. We absolutely do not stop traffic at all. We encourage people to give us money, we've had people tell us, there isn't a way around missing you guys, is there? No, not really, we got this, it's kind of a captive audience, people coming out of the transfer station and going to the ball fields, but we do need your permission to kind of quasi-slow the traffic down in the area, if you will.
What's the date again?
June the 9th, I believe. It's Barrington Day, whatever that is.
No, actually, I had a question.
We have, we have, yes, let's have some questions.
The Firefighters Association supports...
Yes, so, we, the family that comes forward and asks us to do this, we took a vote of the association last week at our association meeting, and we agreed to do it, so the next step was to come and ask for permission to do it.
Right, I'm just asking that donations that people are providing go towards...
Oh, I'm sorry, 100% go to MDA.
Very good, thank you.
So, we take, we roll a little change, bring it to the bank, and have a check made out from the bank directly to MDA, and every bit of it stays in New Hampshire.
Can you just explain MDA for anyone?
Sure, I'm sorry, Muscular Dystrophy Association, and it works, it helps the camp here in New Hampshire, it provides funding, these funds stay in the state of New Hampshire for all you people that do come by and drop money in our booth, and we certainly appreciate that, it all stays in New Hampshire, and for about four hours' worth of work, we typically are able to give the MDA a check for around $1,600 or $1,700. It's been as high as $2,000, so...
Any other questions to the board? Dan?
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion made? You have a second? You have a vote, please? Aye to aye? Motion carries?
The other thing while Rick is here is EMS Week on May 20th to 26th. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that while you were there.
That's correct, it's ironic, there's 52 weeks in a year, and they put Public Works Week and EMS Week on the same week, you know? But anyway, I've asked, I asked Suzanne to do up a proclamation, I would like you folks to declare that week, as well as Public Works Week, I'd ask you to recognize EMS. It's important to understand that EMS in Barrington was formerly organized in 1978, so this year EMS is 40 years old in the town. Joel Sherbin, God bless him, started a number of years before that, going around, and people would call him up, and if it didn't feel good, Joel, go to their house and just help them decide whether they needed an ambulance or not. And from that, they morphed into a small group of people that responded to your home and assisted medically until an ambulance could come out of Rochester, Rodover, even Benoit and Somersworth. And then, a few years later, they, the EMS Association went to the town and asked to support an ambulance, and here we are, 40 years later, running almost 700 calls a day, I mean, a day, but yeah. So, a little later this year, I intend late summer to actually have a open house and try to invite as many of the former EMS responders, and have a little get-together in which I will strongly encourage our Board of Selectmen and other dignitaries to come out, and when we get ready to do that, I think it's huge that 40 years ago, a small group of people decided, determined there was a need in our town for emergency medical services, and we've morphed into what we are today, so, thank you.
Any other public comment? So, you know, move on?
Chair Fairley?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we ask our town administrator, I'm not sure who it was that spoke in reference to the board understanding the paving and the budget, but perhaps John could speak to the public quickly about the information that we all received prior to the RFP process, the changes that were discussed, and how the RFP was upgraded this year, the changes that also subsequently took place, and maybe you could discuss Dan's request for additional data gathering, so that going forward, the public could understand what went in thus far to that project.
Are you prepared to hear it, Elijah?
I'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
The Board of Selectmen, in 2011, had DuBois and King do a road study for the town, in which they proposed spending $1.2 million a year to keep the roads up. Now, we've never got up to the recommended spending level, but in their proposal, they did come up with a list of roads that should be done, in the order in which they should be done. We have been working off that with some adjustments and tweaks over the years. So, the board came up with, Peter came in with a list of the roads that he proposed being done this year, which were Caleb Island Road, Muchadue, Beauty Hill by Ross Road to Hall, Caldwell Lane, Boyle Lane, Evans Road, Morgan's Way, Bear Creek Road, Captain's Bud Lane, Boulder Drive, Mast Road, Robinson Lane, Hillside Drive, Wildcat Road, France Road, and Micah Point Road. A number of those were wear courses, some were overlay, and some were reclaimed and put down a new base coat. The town had budgeted $700,000, we had $34,000 carryover from last year that could also be used. Peter made this recommendation, the board approved it, I wrote up a request for a proposal, Peter and I worked on it, and what it does is it lists the total amount of tons that we anticipated to do that, the square yards, the tons of base coat, and the tons of wear course. So, there's four items on there that were to be bid. We estimated the quantities, 3,146 of shim and overlay, 11,794 yards of reclaimed, 1,730 ton of base coat, and 4140 ton of wear course. We then asked them to give the unit price for each of those four items, which when then multiplied out is how you get to the total price, and we indicated that there would be no mobilization, that that would all have to be included in the price. There was concern with the board that they may want to consider on some roads in the future doing a six-inch addition of crushed rock and grinding and mixing it all together to increase the quality of the base that's under the road, so to do that, they add as an alternate, which was not going to be part of the pricing structure as for the award goes, as to how much it would be. And we did that as much as anything for budget purposes going forward, so we would have an idea of what it would cost to do it, to do that kind of road reconstruction going forward. So, the bids that came in will... So the bids that came in, we'll check the math, but basically, they were supposed to take those four numbers, multiply it by their four numbers, and then add them together. And assuming they did the math right, the low bid is the one that would be the apparent low bidder. And unless there's some quality issue that we know with references or past experience, or they're getting a payment bond or something like that, that would be what I would expect the board is going to award next week. But Peter's going to look it over. We're going to check the math. So that's where we're at. Is that cover what you were interested in?
I think it's important that the public understand the process. And I appreciated the comment that it is such a large portion of the actual town budget. So understanding what we had to know and what went into the RFP prior to the numbers coming out is, I think, helpful for the public. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Dan?
I blame the previous boards. Study was done. The number came into high, and we used, we back forth and used it. But on this list, some of it contradicts itself with the wear course and overlays, because the board showed that overlays has hurt roads, and some roads are messed and stuff overlaid. So that's why we took it away from the engineers and put it in the road agent's hand. But I think we've had to spend some time to reestablish this. We've gone astray from the study over the years, looking at the list of what roads have been done, what we've been missed for overlay. And I blame the previous boards, because they didn't like the big number. And they tried to do the best they could with the dollars. But I think some of these roads have to be adjusted. So if you want four, you can pick one section of town, you move on and stuff. Do we know when we go back to that area?
Okay, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's obvious that if the engineer recommended $1.2 million, and we've been spending $700,000, that we're not going to be able to do everything's on the list. Couple of years ago, we brought, in the budget process, a possibility of hiring an engineer to update the report. And the board was unwilling to spend the money on getting the report updated. At this point, we're working primarily off the experience of our road agent with the DuBois and King engineer going out. I know Peter spent most of one day last week with Scott from DuBois and King. And if the board wants to put more money towards paving, that would be fine. You've just got to go through the budget process. And if the board wants to pay to have a new engineering study done, that's something else you can do in the budget process. I do think that we have done very well with the amount of money we have. And I think the board's going back ever since 2011 deserve a lot of credit for increasing the amount of paving from where it was running in the $200,000 to $300,000 range to where it is now in the $700,000 range.
Dan?
Well, I'm just saying that copying and pasting what was happening, I'm getting false information. I'm reading this in front of me. And it's calling for France for wear course. That was overlay in '15. So Larry didn't get a binder. So this contradicts itself. Micah Point, that was overlay. That's got a wear course on it.
But you approved all of this, you approved this list for doing that work three weeks ago or four weeks ago.
But then he sent all the information. That's what I looked at. It's a...
We didn't have to give that information. We didn't have the road list.
Well, I'd given everyone the road list and the orientation thumb drive, and I think, you know, it's been available for anyone who wanted it.
And I would like to point out, two years ago, when I became a member of this board, I very clearly pointed out that we were not following the road study. We hadn't followed the road study. And the information that was in it and referenced is just completely not relevant to what we're doing. And it talked about like chip and grind when there wasn't even enough road base to do that. So we accepted a study that was incomplete and inaccurate and should never have been accepted. And it's a completed report for this town. So we wasted 50-plus thousand dollars on that.
I disagree with you.
You may, but it's not correct, and we've proven that.
That one chip and grind issue, you're correct. That one there, we're not using. But the rest of the report has been useful. And I think over the last seven years, you'll see that we have done a good job of improving our roads compared to what they were seven years ago.
I give a lot of credit to Peter over the last few years with re-grinding roads and fixing roads. But we have roads that we have gone in and overlaid that if you look at, have complete cracking and separation that is pulling the side of the road apart from where we, again, have not put the necessary attention to them that's needed, and that was called out in the original road report. But I don't put that on Peter. I put that on our board and the way we've accepted that and not given him the ability to do what he needs to do effectively, even if it means doing less road.
I thank Andy and Dan for your comments. What I'm going to do is move this on and ask the clerk to, or John, to put a notice that I want these two items, the road paving and the engineering study, put down for consideration at the budget coming up. Next time, we can have further discussion on that. And we can go from there and look at putting aside some dollars to have that done and possibly alleviate some of the issues that we have now. Is there anybody else who wants to add to those comments for budget consideration concerning paving and the study?
No, I would like to point out it was the one-day vote on this one that went through here.
Okay, it was one-day vote, very well. Dan? We're talking about issues for the budget now, not nothing else.
There is extra money available only if it comes out of recommendation. I recommend...
Dan, that's not what we're talking about. Please, please bear with me. I'll give you a chance to make your statement. Right now, I'm asking for when the budget consideration starts up in September. We need, does anybody else have any comments we want to cover when we get there concerning the paving? Concerning the paving. Yeah, well, let's just submit it there. Now, is there any other comments? Seeing now, we're going to move on to review of the minutes from April 23rd. Have comments from the board, please? Dan?
Hey, Andy, you had voted A on that.
Excuse me. We're talking...
I'm talking about...
No, you're not. We're here to do the minutes. We're not going to sit there and make accusations. We're not going to have accusations from one board member to the next. Now, we're going to work on the minutes and go from there, please.
On the minute, look at the minutes. As handy now as A, not an A, on paving list.
I apologize. Let's move on further then. Any other comments on the minutes?
I think we just need to be certain that, in fact, they're accurate.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Well, I noticed when I read them that Andy voted A when it's supposed to be an A.
Did you have any corrections, Suzanne?
No. And I didn't review them this past week, so I can't even... God, that was going to be my comment because I can't comment on the minutes.
So do we want to approve the minutes as written?
Do you want to continue the minutes? Do you want to continue the minutes until 21st?
Why don't we continue the minutes till the next meeting? We'll have Suzanne review the tape of the meeting and confirm that that actual vote is accurate.
Was that from the last meeting?
Yeah.
April 23rd?
I made a nay vote when we were talking about it.
April 23rd.
Now, I may be confusing something, but I know I was the only one that voted nay.
We also have the April 30th vote we're going to take care of next.
In the minutes, it says the paving project list was approved unanimously.
No. Andy was the only one that...
I don't think you have a tape for that one. Did you tape it the night, Adam's gone that meeting?
Yes, we taped it.
We taped everything. All right, so then with a board submission, I'll move that we moved April 23rd, April 30th minutes to May 21st meeting for review. Anybody object? Seeing that, Suzanne, we're going to take those two minutes and put them for...
Okay, not doing any of the minutes.
Not doing any of the minutes.
So is, so the vote that is under question for the minutes, is the 4/23 meeting vote on the paving list?
That's correct.
Not the RFP, the paving list.
Paving list.
Okay.
And the vote is on there for...
Okay, because it was the RFP that everybody voted for.
That is correct. And at that point, regardless of whether you approved the list or not, if you approved the RFP as written, it included that.
But I believe the RFP is the one I voted nay on.
Right. Oh, so you want me to look at the...
We'll take...
I'll look at all of them.
Because I was the only one that said nay to it.
Board members, let's move on. We'll get there for next week.
To the RFP on the 4/30. Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
No, that's okay. We'll look at the tape.
If you had asked me earlier, I could have done this. I could have done.
I've been running around. My head cut off. Too many wrong calls.
Okay.
Are we ready to go on? Again, I'll apologize for my outburst. I just think that some of our outbursts that we have here in the board are unnecessary. And that's where I stand with it. Sorry. Moving on, staff reports. We have town administrators report.
The Hard Rock Land Swap. The town has received a request to accept 70,829 square feet from Lot 13-2, being transferred from Liberty Trucking to the town of Barrington to help create the driveway entrance into the industrial park. And 70,829 square feet being transferred from lots 13-1 and 19, those are two lots owned by the town of Barrington, to Lot 18 for Liberty Truck. It's a zero-sum property swap. The proposed grading will also level out an additional area on the existing Liberty Truck State site and provide a level pad for their development. And it will allow the road that comes in for that lot to also serve behind it to the big 125-acre parcel that we have. I sent out a copy of the design and what they planned to do. And my recommendation is the board approve the proposed lot line adjustments with Liberty Truck. Now, this has gone to the planning board, so it might change a little at the planning board. And if it does, it will come back. But before it goes to the planning board, I want to make sure the board of selectmen is on board for basically this 70,829 square-foot land swap as far as lot line adjustments go.
Board discussion? Dan?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair Bailey. The select board that proposed this back almost 10 years ago, if I got that right?
Town meeting approved it about 10 years ago, correct, for an eco park.
And that was to be an environmentally sound, I understand that that did not go through the negotiations with the company that originally had been working with the Barrington Select Board had ceased to continue. So this essentially takes an area of land owned by the town, alleviates the town's financial responsibility, basically, to upgrade and then make it a more usable property. Am I understanding this correctly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
I'll make the motion. Is that restated?
We have any other further discussion? I'll hold it. Thanks for that.
I have further discussion.
Please.
I could specifically request that at the last meeting that anything that the board is being asked to vote on be on the agenda itself.
It is on the agenda. Under staff report, it says Hard Rock Land Swap.
It's on there. It says Eco Park. I think the problem is that the name...
The name of it?
Yeah, the name of it is what becomes confusing. We keep calling it a 125 Eco Park, and then at the same time, Liberty Truck. And I think the select board gets confused about that.
Yeah, there's Hard Rock on one side, Land Swap, Eco Park, yeah.
The Eco Park was shut down because there was so much, so much wetlands in it, it couldn't make it work.
Yeah, it's a difficult, it's a difficult lot to develop. And having Liberty Truck put in the entrance to it is certainly going to help us. The best possible to develop is directly behind Liberty Truck, and that would give us access to it.
We have a motion?
I'll be right back.
Second, I will be.
Have a second? Have a vote, please?
Aye.
Hard rock, aye.
Hatch, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Some of these other items are coming up under either old business and new business. The only one that I have in addition to that is the technology RFP. There's been a few comments from the technology committee, which I have incorporated. But basically, does the board approve the technology RFP, realizing there may be one or two more tweaks from the technology committee on specifics of the details.
Comments from the board?
A while back when we agreed to go forward with it, so...
I just wanted to, I mean, you wanted all the RFPs to come to the board, so that's why I brought it here.
I read it and thought it was extremely comprehensive.
The board, the technology committee provided a lot of feedback, or a few feedback comments on it. I wouldn't say a lot, I guess. And even so much as I know John had questions on the CGIS compliance, and it was responded to there, saying, oh, once we acknowledge and accept this, then we are a government entity, then we can process forward on it. That's good.
Do we need a vote, or is that consensus okay? If consensus is okay, I'll see.
You gotta let it support it, okay?
Yeah, aye. Therefore...
Yeah, hard rock, aye.
Hatch, aye.
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 And the, the rest of these will come up at some point down the road. They're in my report for background, but we'll handle them when they get to a more on the agenda.
Clerk, do?
I have request signatures on a couple of poll permits that are actually, I think, already in place. One intent to cut timber, abatement number nine, the first half property tax warrant. Tax bills will be due on July 2nd, I think. A land use change tax warrant, vendor manifest dated May 7th, and payroll manifest dated May 6th.
Mr. Chairman?
Dan?
What were you in the staff reports? Land Committee, Town Land Committee Chairman's here. Are we going to address him tonight?
That's under old business. That's the first item under old business.
And then Swain Road is old business?
We have it on the agenda, please.
Thank you.
Any comments with the clerk? Moving on to old business. We have the Land Committee mission statement.
And I was emailed the minutes, and I pulled that off the minutes, because I think I gave you a draft one for the meeting. And today, I got copies of their minutes and just updated the essential and the mission statement.
And what I believe the proposal is, and Brian's here, thank him for coming and working on this committee. The town's land committee will examine the status and use of town-owned properties and provide advisory input to the select board and other boards, commissions, and committees regarding possible improvements to condition, use, or value of the properties. The committee intends to collaborate with various departments and agencies at town, county, state, and federal level to provide meaningful advice. And what they are asking is if this will be, the board gave them an original charge that related more to forest management, and will the board expand their charge to this proposal?
Discussion from the board?
I think it's a well-written mission statement.
I would just like to say I've read the minutes and the notes and the review of all of the parcels they did and thanked them for it, because it's probably the most thorough report that I've seen from anybody in the two-plus years I've been sitting here on that. So thank you and congratulations. It's nice to see that.
Any other comments? Brian, I want to thank you very much for you and your committee. Really appreciate it.
We're just working on where our priorities are, getting started and stuff. And I guess the first thing, and that's a draft of the minutes.
Thank you.
We've got a few things to clean up in the, that's a draft, meeting minutes. But we're just trying to see where we want to get started and prioritize a little bit. And right now, we're looking at, we're going to talk to the people that are involved with Tamposi. That Tamposi thing is important because it is a watershed that goes to both the Oyster River and the Bellamy River. So Portsmouth and Newington and Durham are drinking water that comes out of that area. So, and we're lucky with John Jinnell and everything. We got contacts with, UNE should a lot of work on the Tamposi project. And there's been a lot of other programs. NRC was in there with some stuff. NRCS was in there with some rabbit habitat stuff and everything. But, so there's a lot of people we've got to look at. And that's a big parcel, and there may be some things that we want to see... But, so there's a lot of people we gotta look at, and that's a big parcel, and there may be some things that we want to see what's going on in there and what we should be doing ahead as a staff. And then start looking at some of the other stuff we have left here. Thank you for doing the mission statement, and we'll try to live up to it.
Is there a motion to give this charge to the committee?
Yep. I'll make a motion to provide that charge to the committee, yes.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
You have a second?
Here I am.
Article five.
Hatch eye.
Bailey, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the old business, I was asked to put the amend select board goals. I hope everybody has brought their approved goals we adopted on the 9th of April and...
It's in my report, if you didn't do it, the one I just put on the table tonight, May 14.
I'm perplexed. Were you approved them? Why are we amending them?
There was a comment under one of them, which I have noted, but I'll wait for that individual to bring up if they want to.
Okay.
In fact, it was already covered. I'm not gonna do anything but say it's considered.
Oh, okay.
Infrastructure and park development, including Redemption Road and Echo Park on Route 125. I think that we brought up, that should also turn around and talk to that as the Hard Rock land. It should also be put in there some way. I think that's what, partially what was meant to happen, and it didn't happen. I think that's what some of the confusion came from. Dan?
Can we make up a six-to-one name? Hard Rock, Echo Park, Liberty. What we gonna call it?
That's what I was bringing up there.
It's called the Tuckler's Real Property, Woodstein Property.
That's right.
Pick one of the 35 names.
Yeah, I have to be honest, from a select board perspective, as we keep getting more and more material, it becomes difficult. See, Liberty is only a portion of it.
Right, no, and I understand. So, does someone want to propose what we're calling that? Or John, do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation is 125 Industrial Park.
There you go. Is the board comfortable?
Discussion from the board for that statement?
No, almost have. We identify it as an A.
Mine was A.
Yep.
So we're in agreement then that we take section four under A, and we change that to Industrial Park.
125.
125 Industrial Park. Discussion on that. Seeing none?
Just because I am who I am. And details are important. There are a couple of industrial parks on 125. Does it make sense just to clarify?
Call it Barrington?
Well, no, because if you look farther down, you have the old Lindsay pit on the other side that is technically in an industrial way. Commercial ways, industrial park right there.
125 Echo Park, Industrial Park.
Is there like a land number or a lot number? I mean, it just, to me, it makes sense to reference, like, from a planning end, you always refer to like...
It's lot 13. You may not want that.
Lucky number?
Yeah, that's the lot number.
Let's see what Marcia thinks.
Well, I did receive the site plan, and if you open it up, I believe Hard Rock, because they're the actual excavator on it, is the name that's on the... Gets a little confusing, because there are more, there is more than one lot involved. And right now, maybe you could just think about it, if you wanted to think about the name. Because the application I got, although it even showed a possible lot line adjustment, it didn't provide a lot line adjustment application. They're really coming in for a permit to excavate and bring that down to a grade and put gravel roads in. It's not a subdivision plan or anything at this point. It's really for a gravel excavation operation.
I would like...
So if you want to think about the final name, you could probably do that.
I would think that we should think of 125 Hard Rock Industrial Park. Does that cover everything, or does somebody else want to change that?
No, I'm okay with that.
That's a good point. The other's a commercial, I suppose.
Yeah, I just, I see there's a couple of them there, and it just creates...
Good points.
Good point.
So we're going to change that section on A to read 125 Hard Rock Industrial Park in place of what it says from "and" on. We'll take Echo Park and 125 off.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a vote?
Here I am.
Article five.
Hatch eye.
Napa.
Bailey, aye. Next item on here is the Swains Lake Class 6 section.
There were two aspects of this. I don't know, Peter, have you gotten the report back from the engineer?
This is another one of the slates we visited last Monday. I asked him to work me up two different quotes as to what I was asked to do.
Yeah.
He said it would probably be June 1st or 2nd.
Okay.
We should table this still, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Table it, table it. Thank you very much. Would you take care of that, please, Suzanne? Thank you.
Are there any questions on the legal options that were given, which I outlined in my report?
It was a really comprehensive list, and I liked that the lawyer gave recommendations.
Okay. So we'll put it on Del June.
New business. Anywhere old business? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. New business. Rick, we have two items to do here. First item we have on the new business is the recognition of National Public Works Week, May 20th to May 26th. And if anybody objects, let me know. If gone, I will read the proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Barrington. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works employees who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our town's transportation and solid waste systems. Whereas in the public interest for the citizens to gain knowledge and, gain knowledge of, to maintain a progressive interest in the understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2018 marks the 58th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, we, the select board, do hereby designate the week of May 20th to the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week. And we urge our residents to join public works professionals and employees and to recognize the substantial contribution they make protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. And witness, we have heretofore the hand and car as a seal of the town of Barrington, effective George Bailey, Chairman, Select. I have to tell you, Peter, it's just, it's a pleasure that I have the opportunity to read that. And I hope that you will convey that to all those that are associated with the public works. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I think the public does a wonderful job, at least of Facebook postings, of showing their appreciation for the department and the employees that are employed in the capacity of being sure that our roadways are safe and updated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Also, I have the pleasure of Town of Barrington Emergency Medical Service Week, May 20th to the 26th, 2018. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive maintenance, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administration, administrators, excuse me, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Therefore, we, the select board, do hereby designate the week of May 20th to the 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Service Week with the theme EMS Strong, Stronger, and Together. Witnessed this 14th day of May, 2014, George Bailey, Chairman. I really want to say to you, Chief, and your entire staff and team on here, thank you so much for everything you've done. And I personally have used your service, and I personally thank you for those that are there and they are still alive today. Thank you very much, Brian. Comments from the board?
I happen to be a family that has all the background in both healthcare and interaction with EMS and firefighting. And I don't think any of us go untouched in this lifetime without having someone we love or ourselves need those services. So, thank you.
It was a great honor for me to sign both of these petitions, and I want to thank both these very much, and everybody else again. Thank you. That's all I have for new business. Anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up?
As a new member of the select board, I wanted to request a review of closed minutes from January, I'm sorry, July of last year until now, to be able to help in the facilitation of reviewing personnel issues from a task force perspective.
Tracy has sent the request in writing to John, who has said, made sure that it comes out to us. The last round of both the job descriptions and the assistant town administrator, the application resumes received, salary requirements, including cover letter from the applicants. And discussion for the board? Dan?
I have no problem with it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Vote?
Here I am.
I'll abstain. Hatch eye.
Napa.
Bailey, aye. Motion carries. John, will you please take care of that?
Yes, I'll take that.
Thank you very much. Under new, under new business, the last thing is the state action impacting the amount of fund balance to retain. I just asked that everybody take their email and please read this. Also, make note of the line for delinquent taxes under interest and what have you. And we'll go from there. We can discuss it later on if necessary. This here was sent April 30th.
If I may update.
Please.
The bill that's gone to the governor is tweaked heavily after the tax collectors explained what the problem would be. And some of the software developers said, your plan won't work. And so therefore, what has come out of the legislature is nowhere near as bad as what they were looking at after the House had finished with it in April. What it does is reduce the interest rate starting next year from 18% to 14% and from 12% to 8%. That will have an impact on fund balance. If they had gone down to 6%, which is what they were talking about initially, we could have ended up being a bank that loaned money to everybody who found that was the cheapest source of borrowing, basically. And it would have required us to revisit our fund balance. As it is, it could affect, as George mentioned, our income line for taxes. We get a couple hundred thousand dollars in interest on unpaid taxes, so that will be reduced most likely by a third. Other than that, I don't see us having a significant fund balance issue because of it. That would have had cash flow. And I'm assuming the governor's gonna sign it. If he doesn't sign it, then we stay where we are. And it doesn't hit until '19.
Okay, just to ensure that if the governor does sign it, we all get a copy, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, now we have the...
Well, just give it, Chair?
Yes, please.
We have taken a couple of budgeted, when's the next year's budget's up? It could affect us a little bit, so we should, always don't forget about it.
That's why I've asked him to keep a surprise what's going on.
Right.
All right, now, moving on, please?
Hold on, hold on. Under new business, the notice that was sent out for office hours was Senator David Waters. I don't know if anybody else looked at it, but I know on a Wednesday, June 6th, that falls right in the middle of my workday. I think it would be worthwhile providing some feedback to him, that if he truly cares about what his constituents think, that he might want to schedule times when the community is not working to actually have office hours for people that reside in the community.
I will send in that notice. That's a good point.
Moving on, we have selectmen's report. Selectman, air?
Last week, I went to the Town Lands Committee, and we did the rough draft and everything. And it's a very good group and very knowledgeable people. They're gonna give us all a nice advisory.
Selectman Hard Rock?
There has not been a Recreation Department Commission's meeting. However, in readings, some of the material that's come through our emails in the past couple of days, Tara, the Director of our Rec Department, has set up information gathering meetings for the public on May the 22nd and May the 23rd, so that members of our public can give input on a focus group study for the needs of our community in relation to recreation. So if anyone has the time, it's about an hour to an hour and a half each focus group session. Some are during daytime hours, some are at night. And it would be wonderful to have members of the community participating in that and providing their input.
Selectman Rock, do you have the times?
I don't, because I do not have the times, but the recreation site, as well as nicely, it was posted by one of the, I think, the board secretary on Barrington, New Hampshire connections.
Okay, I'll go on site. Thank you very much. Selectman Hatch? Selectperson Hatch, excuse me.
We, the zoning board, have a meeting Wednesday. We have a very, very small side setback that they're in. It's amazing. Well, gotta give the guy credit. They're doing what they're supposed to. So that's Wednesday night.
All right, thank you. Selectperson, Dan?
We talked about two lot line adjustments. There was an approval for a farmer's market that will be happening in the paddock area behind Dante's and the salon back there. We looked at the building permits that we approved this evening for the two lots, one on Long Shore and the one on Small Road. And I believe that was everything that we had for the plan.
Just a question. Is that the farmer's market, is that the same one that goes outside of the hardware store now?
Has that, that one got moved? No, no, that's separate. And then we have a planning board meeting tomorrow. And tomorrow's meeting is focused on, there's public hearing.
Economic Development Chapter.
Yeah, thank you.
I did have one item on Senator Waters. I just hope that he understands that, you know, just because he works casual hours, the rest of us don't work. I just hope that he understands that nighttime meeting would be nice.
I've got the times for Rec, May 22nd. There are... Their total is six sessions. May 22nd, 10:45 to 11:45. The second session is 1:30 to 2:30. The third session is 3 to 4, and the fourth session is 6 to 7. And then on the 23rd, the first session is 10:30 to 11:30, and the sixth session is 1 to 2. They ask that you contact the Recreation Secretary, so that they don't have too many people come to any one session.
Thank you, John. Do you have the last public comment, please? Anybody interested?
Paul Moss Teller. Suggestion to Hard Rock, Ledge, Echo Park, whatever you're going to call it. I think you're isolating the development of it. If you're saying industrial, you're removing Hotel, Wally World, Air Park. Wasn't, isn't that supposed to be a development to bring business?
That's correct.
If you say industrial, you're going to limit yourself to only those type of developers. So I think by adding that word industrial in there, you're going to eliminate a lot of other types of developers. Just my two cents.
Thank you for your comments. Dan?
We're too premature right now. Could change. But basically, that's all consent of the whole study over the years. But right now, we need to use this to start.
Better off to be neutral and not say industrial.
Please, if you can.
Okay.
Thank you. Chief?
So I'm really excited to think that we're getting ready to start the '19 budget process against--
I can see the smile on your face.
I can see the look of excitement on my face. But this begs a point that the board needs to consider. You know, we take this land, well, we've got a fair amount of land that we've got tied up in recreation easements and non-development easements, and we want to gate a lot of these roads, and we want passive recreation and stuff. And then we encourage people to go out there and hike and do different things, and inevitably, that's going to create more of a burden on emergency services, whether it be from fires or somebody gets injured out there and then needs our assistance to go out there and get them. We responded last week to a brush fire that was about a little over half a mile out in the woods behind a gentleman's residence. We were able to get Potway in with our Forrester truck, thankfully, because he had a number of logging trails and roads that allowed us access. But the bulk of the fire was handled by walking in on foot and the use of Stratford ATV unit. So I'm going to throw this out there at the risk of getting tied and feathered, but I think the town's going to look at some sort of a funding mechanism in which that we're going to be able to acquire an all-terrain vehicle that can be equipped for fire protection purposes and medical purposes to go in and get people out of these areas should the unfortunate event happen, they get injured, or we have a fire to deal with out there. So I think the charge is on you folks as part to figure where that funding is going to come from. I'm not necessarily, even though I very strongly believe that the Fire Department and emergency services would benefit from such a vehicle, I think that our department has a number of issues already that we're trying to put money away for, and I'm reluctant to add this type of a piece of equipment. I would encourage you folks to look at funding avenues, in particular, whether you took some of the money that was used to take property out of current use, and some of that money comes back, or that you look at a warrant article or something to take some of the funding, and rather than purchasing land, that we start putting some money away to allow us in emergency services, the ability to take care of some of the land that we already got. So I don't think there's an easy answer to it. I'm not asking you guys to answer it tonight, but I think it's incumbent on the five of you folks to figure out the best route in which to look at acquiring one of these vehicles, because we're getting more and more land and more and more recreation and more and more things. And so I'm imploring on you folks to come up with the funding, to come up with the vehicles, so that we can provide these services. And as a side to that, my personal opinion is the town of Barrington should absolutely, under no circumstances, ever give up a town road. I'm not in agreement of turning it into a Class 8 trail. It's not hurting anything for that to stay at a Class 6 road. You know what? That particular road, probably in anybody's lifetime in this room, may not go all the way through. But we have, it's incumbent on us to make sure that 50 or 100 years from now, if the residents of this town felt that the traffic was bad enough in town, that they needed to punch that road through, so that people could get around town, or there's some other roads that we have that are unmaintained, Class 6 roads, they should be left there. I absolutely 100% do not agree with, you know, the Town Administrator and I had a conversation about the other day, and absolutely you can put a warrant article in, and you can put not warrant article in to take it back down the road, but it absolutely does not hurt anything to leave that piece of land in town possession, and I strongly encourage the five of you not to support a warrant article or anything like that to turn that into a Class 8 trail. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Chief, I also like just to ask you that make consideration of the four-wheeler that you wanted to put for there. If you would have some interest, would you put together a little package that we could review, and maybe we could look at ways of funding it come September?
Sure.
If we had something with base price and everything else?
Sure.
Anybody else have a comment for the chief?
And it could be red.
So the tar and the feathering will be getting promptly after the--
That's right. Tracy?
Chief, currently, when people are injured up in the White Mountains, the Fish and Game Department sends in a group of hikers, and they remove them. I'm sure that we have available to us some of the same services.
Well, you mean the age of a hiker?
No, I understand, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying, before we go ahead and purchase something, I am just wanting to be fully aware of what services are already available.
I think you're looking at two different things, and I think that the thing is, is that we've often on over the years, we have used the services of the town of Stratford in the last three or four years, eight or 10 times, to, for different instances, with lost individuals, fires, taking, removing bodies from the woods because they were inaccessible any other way. And truthfully, I think that, you know, it's time for us to look at having a piece of equipment of our own. I think there's situations in which, and I certainly, please, I'm not trying to speak for the police chief, him and I have not even had a little bit of conversation about this, but, you know, certainly if they have to start going into some of these areas and patrolling them for activities that people shouldn't be doing, that it probably could end up being a shared resource of some sort, where they could go into these properties. But again, I've not had that conversation with him.
Dan?
I understand the chief's concerns. A year and a half ago, I looked into, I asked him for data and stuff, there is a demand, and it's been there for a while and stuff, so I support his request and stuff, and in the research I have found, it's all true, there is going to be more future demand on this.
I think come September, when we sit down and make that discussion, we'll have better ways of having the funding, where it's coming from, and we can put John to work pulling it all together to help us out that way also. John, you had, you want to comment?
I have different subjects.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? John?
I think Paul had a good point on the industrial might seem to be limiting it, so maybe we should use the word commercial, 125 Hard Rock Commercial Park? Because commercial, I think, would cover industrial.
Back to the Hotel and Wally World.
Please, go up here to this--
I'll make a motion to amend that. I don't know if it's, it's not my motion, it's actually--
Again, I'm just trying to keep this thing as neutral as possible, because you're going to try to bring in developers, and you say industrial, or you say commercial, and, you know, what about hospitals? I mean, there's a range of things. And if you say park, then they're going to think--
So why don't we just turn around, as a board member here, why don't we just turn around and remove the word industrial and just put 125 Hard Rock Park? Leave it simple.
Because then you're going to think it's like a hiking trail in recreation.
Again, I'm going to say a majority of the people in this town don't even have a clue what's going on over there. So you've got to keep it neutral, and when you get closer to doing something, let me change it.
I think--
I'm willing to--
Dan, do you have a comment?
Yes. I'm willing to amend my motion and make it more-- please vote.
All right, so we'll go back, and we'll open up the goals for 2018. Select voted up at 4:90, 2018, so we can turn around and talk about Section 4, Section A, Line A.
I'll second the motion to amend that from, what, from 125 Hard Rock--
Industrial--
Changing industrial--
It's temporary.
Commercial, I guess.
No, but it's kind of--
I know, I was just saying--
It's temporary, and it's been going on 15 years.
Temple Israel.
I think what the Select Board is asking-- The Select Board is asking for continuity across all documents. It's, you understand, all of us who have other careers, as we're reading all these and then throughout the week, trying to keep track of what we're actually reading becomes excessively important. Chair Bailey, did you want to recognize Marcia?
No, I don't, but I will. Marcia, please.
Well, thank you, because tomorrow evening, the Planning Board is holding a public hearing on an economic development master plan, which they've put a considerable amount of work into, and they've had a considerable amount of discussion about the property the town owns, and the desire to attract and have a light industrial park. And I just like, and I'm not going to tell you to change the name one way or another, what I'd like you to do is to just hold off naming it. I mean, we're at the, we haven't had a shovel in the ground, we don't have a permit yet, we're at the beginning review stages. I just, you know, if you leave Hard Rock on it, so we know what we're talking about for now, I just, until that master plan is adopted, I don't think it's fair to cut off the work that the committee did, and really focusing on that particular piece of property as a light industrial park. And they had their reasons for doing so.
Thank you very much for your comments.
125 Hard Rock Project?
Our agreement.
Project?
Well, projects think of housing, you know.
How about agreement? Not Hard Rock. How about agreement? We came to agreement?
Well, that's not--
Another thing we can consider is ending the statement at the word road. Put a period there and just drop Echo Park on Route 125. You can drop it, we'll all be done, we can wait for the Planning Board to come out with a new title and everything else, we'll be all set.
I would agree with Chairman Bailey on that.
I think that makes sense, too.
All right. So that's my motion.
Second it.
So what is it? What was the motion?
The motion was to end the sentence at the end of the word road, and remove and Echo Park on Route 125. Just put a period there, and that's it. It's gone away.
Include Redemption Road and 125?
Nope, just Redemption Road, period.
Consider, because infrastructure and park development, park development can include more than, can include a whole lot of stuff.
We could eliminate all the illustrations, just say, "Consider infrastructure impacted."
Park development, period. Both of which work.
The goals, yeah.
It doesn't, I mean, Redemption Road--
What's the board's choice?
Well--
Dan, you got it.
Redemption Road.
You've got two Redemption Roads in the town of Barrington right now.
To clarify to the public, what we're talking about is not naming this park. We're talking about our goals as a Select Board, and we keep receiving information working towards those goals with four or five different names for the same piece. And all we're trying to get at is what we name it on our goals page.
I would like to make a motion to amend it to say, "Consider infrastructure and park development," period.
We have that motion?
I would second that.
We have a second, we have a vote, please?
Aye or aye.
Hard Rock, aye.
Hatch, aye.
Hatch, aye.
Bailey, aye, there you go. Thank you very much. End of discussion.
Briefly, Mr. Chair, as a cemetery trustee, trustee Lindsey reminded me to let you folks know that we met last week, we took a look at the Sem sites program. We were very impressed with the program that they showed us. I think it's going to be extremely helpful for the staff up there when it comes to selling graves and knowing where lots are for families that when they get ready to use them down the road, and I think that it has the potential for the public to be able to solicit information. So we took a vote and agreed to do that, and John moved forward with a PO, and I believe that we're in the works to get that up. So I'm not sure how long it'll take. Peyton, I think she's going to kind of work on that as time permits, and she should have that done at some point within a few months. When I say few, two could be six or eight, I don't know.
Could we put a plan together around that to get it done?
It's kind of a feeling.
Yeah, I'll see what we can do, put together as we get it. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
Can I speak publicly?
Sure, you may. Go ahead. No, you don't have to. If I was to stay--
So in reference to what was just discussed, so the public can understand, there's software coming through that's going to GPS the markings of the remains within the cemeteries, and I have to, from a public perspective, agree with Select Person Knapp that there should be a technology plan in place. I've rolled out enough pieces of software over the years that if you don't have a plan, it likely is not going to go very fast, and it's not going to go very well, so I think I'm in support of that idea.
I agree, because it'll just end up sitting on the shelf like a lot of other ones.
Incomplete.
Next issue on the agenda for tonight is ongoing issues, not on the agenda.
I just left that there.
We have that there, I haven't received anything, nor has Suzanne received anything. If you have any information that you think needs to be put on there, please either send it to myself or to Suzanne, and we can put the list together and get it there. I have one last issue I would like to say again. My outburst tonight, I was really, I was disappointed, upset, and all kinds of things. One of the things we passed out a while ago was a rules and procedures of the Board of Selectmen. I would ask my fellow Board members to take that, review it between now and the next meeting, and again, I apologize to my Board members that are with me, that would go that way there.
It's on that thumb drive I gave you.
Oh, okay.
So, again, that's it. Do we have any motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Anybody oppose? All the favor of Motion Carriage, meaning adjourn.
If you want a paper copy, I'll pick one for you.
I like, yeah, I do like the paper. I like the sentence, I'm trying to read.
Can we send that forward to the Board?
Okay, I'll do that for us.
Send that forward to the Board.
Shit, I have something to speak.